Thank you everybody for coming. I'm sorry for the late people taking the beans. It was worse running longer than they planned to work, you know? But thank you for being flexible. So the only item that's on our agenda today is this proposed food truck ordinance. We moved this to committee because essentially, at least no one who was present at the council meeting felt comfortable with the ordinance as it was written. So we wanted to have more time to discuss with the community and amongst ourselves and see if there is some agreement that we can come to that works well for everyone. So thank you all for coming and being able to give input. Committee meeting function a little bit differently than council meetings. We all operate under rules of order so that it can be more of like an open conversation legally at council meetings. We are not allowed to do that. But at committee meetings, we can be a little bit more informal and have more of an open dialogue.
We need to be recorded.
Yes, we are also recording. We also legally have to do that.
Yes.
Are we allowed to or no?
Oh, you can. Yeah, you can record anything. Record is different. They don't let anybody record anything or take any photos or anything. But here, yeah, we do. You can do it.
Recording, photos, commentary, I guess.
So I don't know what the easiest way is to go about this. Or normally, we have a podium and people can like tater and stuff.
I go speak today, rip my head out. I signed this in the food truck that we work on it. With our customers that come in. It was kind of late. We started last Friday. So I bring a bunch of signatures if it helps. People want, we stay there. And then tell me if they need more, we can actually give more and break some big and some over there also.
Yeah, that's great.
If that help, I will try to collect more. And the other thing I have to say, and I was speaking with him yesterday. We're going to try to do everything by the law and the way it should be. But we need their job, you know what I'm saying? We support our family out of there. And I don't do nothing other besides that. If I enclose that, then I'm going to have no job. And how to support my family, I don't know, the way you guys look at it. And the way I see also is like, why not want to, I mean, it's food, food, it's three establishment even downtown and everywhere. So why not want to be different? I mean, I just don't get it, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah. Thank you for bringing that. That makes a big difference. Yes. And support from community is great. We're trying to show the administration, people who are kind of brought this to committee, like, hey, here's what the community thinks. That is really helpful.
Yeah, I thought of that. And thank you very much. I will try to collect more in case we have another, another meeting or something, you know?
As someone who's new to the community, to the conversation, not new, but sort of new, could you read the ordinance so I can figure out if that makes sense?
Watching you the whole word thing. It's essential. I'm happy to summarize it as well.
Summarize it, please, yes.
Because along in the short of it, there is a standing state law or county law that says that food trucks can't be in one place for more than 40 days. That this ordinance reiterates that. The part that we all especially took issue with was that it stated that you could not have a food truck on private or public property without a single day permit, which needed to be applied for 14 days in advance at least. So that essentially.
What? Oh, to my understanding, it makes it completely wrong on private property. You can get on public property a permit, like you said.
And there is a law that comes, that kind of intervenes in a weird way that states that it is illegal to sell product on private property, which was originally a law built to dissuade peddlers, like to dissuade people from selling illegally. I think that this is sort of leaning on that a little bit, and I don't feel that those, that that applies here. I don't think that those insurances are permitted in businesses. I don't feel that that should apply here. But I am not a lawyer, so I can't.
I mean, I don't, I can't speak for anybody else, but Cory, I know you have to have a lease. So he is, in essence, just as much.
A tenant.
Been here for four years.
Yeah, yeah. So.
I have a lease also, I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I don't see, I regret my hand, but I have a lease also. Every year I renew it, every year. And the reason I go every year, because the situation, I know nothing is there. And nothing is forever, yes, but we're trying to work as much as we can to be forever because, I mean, it's what we do. But you know, it's like leasing an apartment, leasing a house. You cannot go and sign it for 10 years. Definitely every year I sign it, then I have a contract and everything.
Yeah.
Julie, something, the way I read this for you specifically, is I, I think this could be interpreted to say you're not allowed to do any kind of food service outside of your building.
That's exactly my problem. I have tried to do a couple of things where I go to the off-pipe market and do something, and I was told that I had to have a $600 a day use permit to do that. But a food truck can pull up and get, and have no permit and waltz right in. But I give back to our community 100%. I support Norwood Athletics. I support soccer, Boy Scouts, Girl Scouts, the whole thing. But yet I'm not allowed to use, to be involved in the community outreach stuff. And that is upsetting to me. It is also, the only other part I have is my, I am charged by occupancy on my, I pay for my food license based on occupancy of my seats. You, a food truck can serve 12 times the many people as I do in one day. And they're charged a blanket flat fee. But on the flip side of that, I do appreciate that the more people that come into our community and see the other businesses that are around and that kind of stuff is a good thing. I don't have a problem with food trucks. I have a problem with how the fee structures and the, and the charges are done and the licensures. That's, that's my thing. If, if we could try to make that on a more fair basis and even inspections and that kind of stuff on a more fair basis, then, like I said, the more people coming into our community and doing things, the better off we all are. I know that the truck across the street from us brings in a lot of people and they see us and they sometimes they come over and, of course, think we have Indian food, but they come over and they, you know, check us out. They'll come over there, they'll, you know, they'll come and sit and have a drink while they're waiting for food across the street. Like, it's, it's okay to bring people into our community. I don't have a problem with that. I do have a problem with the fairness of how everything is licensed and charged and that kind of stuff.
Is that county and state?
Yeah.
I think this is because I've been doing this a long time, that I'm very familiar with the licenses and I'm very familiar with the charges. Norwood is just, Norwood is just one of those municipalities that don't charge for food trucks. Sometimes they do, sometimes they don't. I happen to know that food trucks are charged expeditiously whenever we go to some of these events. Sometimes up to 15, sometimes to $2,000 for every, every time we go. For instance, if I have to do an event in Madisonville, I can pay $1,000. Then the next day, if I have to go to Silverton, I can pay another $500. If I go to Evanston, that could be another $1,500. So we're, we're taxed pretty heavily when it comes to serving. I've been in this community now 10 years and I started our business six years ago. And I felt like from where we started to where we are now, we've made tremendous strides in this particular community. I also give back to the community. I also give to the police departments, the schools. I also donate to the homeless shelters and the rehabilitation, rehabilitation shelters. And so I, I, I think that, I think it's being viewed wrong because I think when you said that food trucks, they, they can only sit in one place for 40 times, that Ohio revised code or RC, I think is being interpreted the, the wrong way. And I think discussions like this make it helpful. In that particular RC, it doesn't state how far we have to move, how long we have to move. It doesn't state how many days, how many hours. It doesn't state, it doesn't state any, any of that. It just states that the mobile food truck license was established to commit that guests. We are, we're not a brick and mortar and we have to move those food trucks to show that we are a mobile unit. I happen to do about 150 events a year, so we move ours quite a bit a year. I know Red Smoke and they, they move quite a bit. I know some of the other trucks move quite a bit. I think what's helpful is that the communication between the food trucks and the health department and maybe city hall and maybe a food truck division in Norwood would, would actually help. Maybe we can discuss. I have no problem. I don't think any of these people have any problem with paying the city a particular fee for food trucks if, if, if that can be established. I just think the way things are being interpreted is not being interpreted in the correct manner. And so I think discussions like this are very helpful to do. I'm not, I'm not mad at you for saying, hey, listen, I have to pay this money. You're a business owner and you have to make money just like all of us have to make money and feed your family. So I'm not, I'm not mad at that. I just would hope that we can come up with some type of, some type of equitable solution to this whole, whole thing without it getting, you know, really messy, if we can, if that's something that we can do.
No, I don't, I don't disagree with that. I think that, I think there's a good solution. I just think that Norwood's not, Norwood's not enforcing some of the rules that they need to to make sure that everybody is treated equitably.
Such as? Which rules?
Just the, just, I mean, you guys pay a lease and I, I just think that, I mean, I pay for 200 people to sit in my restaurant, whether there's one person or 200. So, and like I said, I could feed 10 people in a day and you guys could feed, what, 50, 60, 70, 80? And I'm still getting paid for two, I'm still paying for 200. And we're not taking into consideration parking and all that other stuff that has to come into effect.
I don't know about that. So it's like you decided that you wanted to pay that. You know what I mean?
Okay.
All our leases that we gave, we had a decision to say, yeah, we want to pay that or no, we don't want to pay that. I think you had the same decision also.
Okay, fair enough.
Also want to address, we bring a lot of people in the community. And I've said just once before, people that we bring would otherwise not come in Norwood.
And I truly recognize that. And that's why I said that in the first beginning. The more people we bring into Norwood, the more people that see businesses and see the things that are happening in Norwood, the better off we all are. I agree with that completely.
And just like you said, while people maybe come to get some food from another restaurant while they're doing that, they come to shop with you. Same thing with the gas stations. If Norwood didn't have the business that they have, it would be a lot more restaurants to close down.
Agreed.
For example, Street Fried, they closed down. They even hasn't been a year. Before that, Dicky's Barbecue, it closed down. And then they make a, it was said that food trucks are taking away from business.
No, I don't, I don't agree with that at all.
Okay.
No, I do not agree with that at all.
There was someone says last week also, or the last time we had this meeting, that food trucks are dirty. And there was something made about, mentioned about my generator being too loud and smoke from the barbecue was just polluting the area.
I don't, I don't agree with that either.
Okay.
Because, because I, we have, we have a smoker in the back and sometimes we do that and stuff. So we, I don't agree with that at all. I, I, I understand that you guys are doing business and whatever. And maybe I'm not educated well enough to know, but I do, I do, I do know that I just, I just want to make sure that we're all playing on the same level playing field. And that if I would like to go and do something that I'm not going to be charged a transient license for $600 so I can, you know, have a barbecue out on the, you know, for a little while. So yeah, so we just have to figure that, we have to figure that out.
That has nothing to do with the food trucks, but it has everything to do with this.
Well, it does. You guys are transient, so.
Right, but this is. Because I've seen people set up tents, right?
Right.
I've seen people set up tents and based on this, or based on this new zoning law, right?
Right.
For example, say that if, I'm just going to be, I'm just going to read it. It says that mobile food truck carts, right, trailers, and vendors should be permitted to conduct business on commercially operate, should be permitted to conduct business on commercially operate or any private or public lot, right? The normal function of a food truck should insist or be directed and permitted to operate on public or private thing. So what this means is this, let's say hypothetically, if this goes through, right? Every vendor, which I'm okay with it because we do it. And that, for example, participating at off-pipe market, we have to pay a vendor's fee, right? Every solicitor from, even the Girl Scouts, we have to pay a vendor fee to sell cookies inside of Kroger's. If a church wants to do a fundraiser, if the Indian Mountain wants to do a fundraiser and they wanted to have a food truck there, for instance, and that food truck cancels or can't come because of mechanical reasons and it has to be 14, 14 days out. That kills that, that, that thing. You know, I know they do a lot of stuff at Victory Park with the food trucks and the food trucks can't come. So I'm okay with, with making the playing field leveling and, and, and that's some of her concerns. But I, but I would also like to hear from the McDonald's, the Chipotle's, the Taco Bells. I would like to also hear from some of the other people that, restaurateurs that are in the, in this particular community and provide, because just like she does, I think all of us try to give back to the community, but I'm still trying to figure out what is the issue because it hasn't been stated that, and the way this is written up, it's like council. Council doesn't want, council wants this with time.
Council never read this publicly and, or we did not have anything to do with it until then.
Yeah, the way, the way it was read, it's like council. And so I have a lot of people from media and everybody kind of say, the city council really want this. That's a question that you, I can't speak for Emily or I can't speak for any of you guys, right? But I can say for sure that what I, what I was saying is that council wants to have a conversation. But I want to know what is the issue, what can we do, what kind of solutions can we bring to the table that will make the playing field even for everybody and make it equitable for, 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 for everybody?
Let me ask a couple of questions and follow up. First of all, Julie, where do you pay those fees or to whom do you pay those fees?
I was the board of health.
The Norwood Board of Health, okay. And then that's an annual.
The restaurant, yes, like the food service license is an annual.
Okay.
I have to be inspected by the police department, the fire department and, and the board of health.
Yeah.
And then I have to pay a fee to all three of those.
And I think that's one of the only regulations that doesn't happen to food trucks is a fire inspection.
That's not true.
Yeah, that's not true.
That's not true. They've got me in it. They've got me in it.
I pay $150 a year to the fire department, to Hamilton. You can't operate anywhere within the city, right, without that fire sticker. So that fire stickers and what they do is, and I'm pretty sure you're going to attest to this, they'll come, they'll do a pressure test on your propane tanks. You have to have certain carbon monoxide detectors, leak detectors. You have to be 100 feet away from certain buildings where you operate. So the food trucks are actually heavily regulated more heavily because we're fire inspected a lot. The, the, the health department can come and inspect us two, three, four, five, six times a year if they want. When we go to these events and we do these things, we're still, we're still inspected. So we have to be, we, it has to be within fire code in order for us to even operate because, because, because of the propane tanks or electric or whatever it is. So yes, we do get, we do get, we do have to pay for those fees.
I worked at a residence, I was 15 years old. And I do a lot of stuff with the fire department, with health department and Kentucky, Cincinnati, blah, blah, blah. And we do everything the same with the food trucks. It's the same thing. It's an establishment. You had to have your coolies working properly. You had to have your gas and every, it is, they, they treat all the same. Like, it's not different. And like I said, a little more heavy, yes, because we're outside. So things can broke faster, so things can die and everything. And also they never tell you when the board of health come in. So you have to have everything working 100%. And then try to check it one thing, you have to check it three times, you know?
Wait, I misspoke. It's just firing.
Oh, I'm on the police.
No, just firing. I misspoke. It's just firing for the help. I was like, wait a minute, yeah.
I have another question. Before I got my food truck, I thought about, don't want a brick and mortar, don't want a food truck. I decided I don't want a brick and mortar because all of the entry expenses become with that. The insurance is that you'll have to get after what that employee, for the employees. The health department is very strict on restaurants. I've been told by a health, one of the health directors, and actually he's someone that was running around in Norwood that was helping up. He's saying food trucks are cleaner than restaurants. If you were around any restaurant and you look in there, there was mouse traps all around the restaurant. Back in the building, there's mouse traps also. And the food trucks, you can actually see how clean or dirty it is, you know, being a customer. I've actually sat back at some of the events and looked at the food trucks and was like, I would never eat there, so dirty. In the restaurants, in the restaurants, all you see is, you don't see the kitchen here.
Sometimes you don't see nothing. Some, nah, a lot of them have it open window. And but some of them do, but yeah, sometimes you don't see anything. And I mean, some kitchen, they're 100% right, they're disgusting.
Yeah.
And I don't places, but I'm not going to say anything, you know what I'm saying? I'm not going to.
But I don't think, I think cleanliness was, it was brought up, but I don't think that's the main issue.
Yeah, I don't think.
That was probably what I wanted to know.
Yeah, that was, yeah, that was, that was one of the issues. I don't, I don't think that's the main issue. I think one of the issues that they, that Julie brought up, Flor, it's about, you know, the equity in terms of, you know, the plan they will be in, being there.
And she has to pay the $600.
I just don't want to charge a vendor's fee for one day, a vendor's fee for that. Restaurants that I know pay, usually pay vendor's fees.
I was told by the old health department person that I would need a Haywood County transient license plus. I would need to pay a one day fee, one day, the transient license was, and I, that was years and years ago. So I don't know what the prices are now. So, so it was going to entitle us something around $600 plus. I would need a mobile hand washing station and a bunch of different, and I had to submit a plan of what my station looked like 14 days in advance. So I guess I, I, I don't understand why I would have had to do that stuff 14 days in advance, but a food truck can just pull up and.
Well, that, that is very much true. You do have to submit a plan and you have to pay for, but it's not $600. You have every.
Well, back then, back when I was doing it, when I did all the math, the way it was spent, it was going to be $600 and I made, I would have made about $100 on this.
Now, if you're looking at the RC, the, the only thing, and it's even with the, even if we have stands, everybody, they, they all want you to have a hand wash.
Right, and they should.
That's one of the requirements. That's, you know, other than that, it's, it's normally a vendor's fee. I'm, I'm very familiar with restaurants. I have a lot of friends that own food trucks and restaurants. And for instance, when they do the Taste of Cincinnati, these are restaurants, they pay the same vendor fee. They go out and do some of these other events like Union Center of Love Bar or some of the other things. They pay, they pay a regular vendor's fee to be vending in there, right?
Right.
And then the city pays for the permit for the whole thing. It's, you know, but $600 is assessed. That's a long time ago. It's not like they're now. But as far as occupancy, the occupancy license, that I understand because we built an office and Jeff knows about, Jeff knows about this. We went to rehab one of the buildings that was in Norwood. And so we did, and so yes, I paid $165 to, for an occupancy license to transfer it over, you know, to our office. Why you're paying, you know, for 200 heads? That I don't know.
Well, because I have, because of my square footage, I have 250.
Oh.
It's based on the square footage. So that's what I'm saying is, is you guys could potentially take up at least half the square footage that I take up on park, based on parking in lines in the space you need for your truck and all that stuff. But because I have a brick and mortar, I pay more, which is neither here nor there. It's a choice. You're right. And, and we did make that choice. I don't have a, a problem with that. I just want to see that, that and then the fee structure of moving the truck and moving it to a different place and doing this and doing that to be more equitable.
Give me a few seconds.
I mean, I mean, I'm trying to figure out the right way to state this because I'm kind of running blind. So I, I guess I need more time to think about my thoughts the way I want to say that out. So I need to.
Isn't it that you want the food trucks to move every 40 days or do you want them to move? Do you feel like they're taking the business away from you?
Not at all. No. Like I said, I am happy with the amount of people, people are bringing in. I don't have a problem with you guys trying to do business.
If you wanted to do an extension of your business, it is exponentially more expensive.
It difficult, yes. So, but that's, again, that is a choice that I can, like he said, maybe, maybe I'm thinking about this the wrong way and that's a choice that I made. So I, I do understand. I'm just, it seems like there should be some way that regular brick and mortar folks can't do these public events and do stuff for the community or just to make money somewhere else in such a way that they are, well, pretty even to everything that they can do. And maybe that's a whole separate discussion.
And maybe that is a whole separate discussion. I agree that's something.
I think for this, for this ordinance. Yeah, it is a separate discussion. And I don't want to get us off track. I don't want to get you off track.
It's just silly issue, but for this particular ordinance, yes. The bigger issue with this is that 14 day that center fee, right, and not being able, some, some things are state law, but.
I have one more question that might be more valuable.
Sure.
I have met with some city administrators of some other cities. People who've worked as city administrator in other cities. And they brought up a few questions around taxes. When trucks are in Norwood or are they, can we send a food truck to Norwood?
I do.
You are based in Norwood, right?
Yes.
Okay. So if a truck is not based in Norwood, but is coming to market Norwood for a week or for their 40 days, whatever, are we then receiving the income tax, the tax? That was a question that was brought actually. I did not know the answer.
Yeah, I must say, we are, if they're filing, so the license regulation. So I just, to add some context, so there's four types of, of regulations. Actually, it's live, I don't know. You guys talked quite a bit about what I think are, I would say, food state. But that's more of the state, like, what's county, yeah, local, local help. So the food, that's actually first regulation. That's where the 40 day comes to play. Because they have their own separate legislation requires. The second one, which you brought up, or say taxes. That's a combination typically where you have the licensing regulation. So whether you're a peddler, where you're a brick and mortar business, or whatever, you have employment, you probably should be filing registration. So by this, for those who aren't in sales, like, the business. Another big one, in terms of, like, those especially if you've had the city on its own. Again, there are laws from the state, like we've got a traffic policy. Sometimes eating on a cold bread and paper, you're driving, it's possible to be a high brand, law, or that. That's usually more forced by a combination of our city, certain structure, the laws. The last one, there's preparation with the frat. Sony is, Sony is strictly a law dictating on the land where you go. Typically, Sony primarily only relates to a fixed structure, like a building or a tent, a tent or a temporary thing. But that's Sony gets addressed. So how this whole thing started, well, we've got two and a half, three years, probably before I lie, where there was an issue where others wanted to, you know, becoming successful, they wanted to turn into electrical. And I guess only parts in, no, because temporary. Now, whether that could be addressed of what, health, of our location, anyways, I think building staff went to law department, went to all power saying, hey, here's a concern for what we do. And I guess the belief was that the, the lack of better words, key. If the Sony weren't speaking one way or the other. Now, they could have tried, what they'll do to the regulation, cross the fingers. But I said, before they did anything, they wanted more teeth than Sony. So essentially, like I said, it comes down to, I heard the analogy, you know, what if I forget? There's either sentence, carrots, or standard regulation. So in the case of food trucks, there was four types of steps, laws, orders. And it was just, and then this early discussions that we had, you can also say, hey, how do you want to proceed? Because to me, you step back from this issue coming from Pennsylvania. What I learned, a lot of this came out of COVID because with restaurants being closed, restaurants going bankrupt, restaurants having a lot of restrictions, food trucks build in that gap and provide food to people because it was a no brainer. They have mobility, they can set up, they can provide the service. And then after COVID, a lot of things aired out. And I assume that's what happened here. Essentially, whether, public health was told, hey, it's not an issue or, you know, laid back during COVID and a lot of things dropped out. So that's what at least I see from the last, you know, three and a half, four years, five years, looking at it. So people blame a lot of COVID, but to me. People blame a lot of their COVID, but to me, it made sense, because at the time, restaurants were so strict, um, going back, whatever reason. I think, but also, like, food trucks came in and I saw that even for the, uh, outdoor, um, activities. Wedding, and everything else still had to continue. But they filmed in that beach where they were able to provide that service, which we didn't have, we were banned many years.
Instead of. Um, to follow up with that. Mr. S, um. Are there concerns from fire department or, or just then public safety concerns where, especially about having. Permanent electrical, like, sure.
Uh, I mean, same. Our group was, um, like he said, they're, they're inspected. I don't know if they're all inspected, they all should be inspected. Now, there are certain municipalities, fires that would be inspected by the community, and I didn't like who I should have, who I should have had that. Um. They don't, sort of, state fire department allows us to inspect any food truck. Um, the only apps of our government, that's, that meets Cincinnati, it's made, what, minutes? They did. They're, and, and we're willing to kind of look at it, they're inspected by another municipality, we may allow it to be, good to go, but they, they're inspected by. From the fire department, you're good, you know, that's, that's fine. If there's not, no, they only operate, oh, like, because only operating, they may not have a, uh, inspection to, um, that happens. Um, as far as, you know, them being, having enough power. And, um, that's, um, well, as long as we, we follow the regulations.
So to you all, are there any safety concerns, you know, um, not have short power, a permanent. No, and let me answer that, because, well, this is what we did. I'm sorry, what's your name again? I'm sorry, I just got it. Um, what we did was this, what I did was this, I went before, I call I B C, right? Because I B C sets up what they call a tri, a tripod, right? So we said, we'll set the tripod in the church right line. We will, before we do it, we, we wanna go to. Get, see, we have to get permanent and license from, this, from the city first. Well, I did that, I'd be saying, no, because we felt like, okay, then. But parents, we, we have to pay, they, we have to pay taxes, they're difficult, all that stuff, which we're really willing to do. I'm one of those trucks. That, I think, I came before COVID, but we exponentially got more and more successful. During COVID, now after COVID, right? And so I just felt like, because I live in Norwood and because I reside here. Um, everybody doesn't have five hundred thousand dollars to put into building, okay, um, or more. Everybody doesn't, you know, some of these buildings I went around to, they're a million dollars or more to just. Redo them and rehash. Some of these people don't have that type of cash on hand, or can't get that type of cash on hand. And so food trucking was a way that people can eat, provide for their families, get jobs by, get jobs for the community. But yet still function on a regular basis. By no means, I don't think nobody in here said, well, I'm gonna go and I'll do any amount, or I'm gonna, I'll do. Plommin's, you know, uh, uh, uh. Yeah, yeah, no, 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 nobody. I think we're all starting out on the basis of. We want to start our own business because COVID was laying people off and, 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 and we just wanted to establish something. Now, if you look at some of the apartment, I mean, some of the, the parking structures, that some of these food trucks are parked on, right? If you go around and, and look at all of them, they're all a lot cleaner, you know, a lot safer than some of the buildings that are pinned down. Than, than Norwood. For instance, down there at the E P, I know we, we pay for the grass feed cut, we pay for extra lighting, we pay for the trash to be picked up. We pay, we pay for all that. He does the exact same thing. He does the exact same thing, right? Um, we all do, we all pay those fees. One, one of them pay the city tax. I, I don't care about that. I pay the city tax, I don't care about that. Um, but I wanna make sure that it's even, but we're still trying to find. How nobody is really telling us why.
We should answer that question.
No, why, why, why is there a problem when the, the, the areas were clean, are painted? Are, they stay, you know, well, when you go look at some of the buildings, I'm like, every road is something where it's, it's condition. It's horrible.
I wish that I could answer that question. And I. Like, as I did not write this, and. For, for me, like. My main goal, we make sure everyone, every type of business. Has, as, as even printing as possible, that state land, health stuff is taken care of and that state law is followed. That's all I really care about. Now, the fee stuff is something, I, I suffered, but that, that's. Uh, that is annoying to me, that, it, it is what it is, and that's okay. But, no, again, he could, when he, every time he moves his truck, he may have to pay a thousand dollars. So if it costs me six hundred dollars, do something, that's what it costs, that's okay. Like, like I said, that could be a very long time ago when I could be looking at it completely. What I'm saying is, it is. Yeah. I just, um. I, I think you guys just need to have this discussion. It's more in the lines of. What you're gonna talk about as far as permitting and that kind of stuff. And I think, I think it boils down to what the state says and what the, what the permits need to be. Yep. And just. As far as I'm concerned, as long as we're following what the state has done, and if we have a few tweaks here or there, then, then there's not a problem.
Yeah, that's for me too, like, the state law is what it is. I don't think.
Yeah, so you, there's no other issues.
I don't think it's, should be another issue, you know?
Yeah.
And this bring up, and the last thing, people go to eat whatever they want or whatever you choose. I mean, it is McDonald's, it is, uh, fried chicken. And, uh, Taco Bell, I mean, it's a bunch of places. You can choose whatever you want in the same place, and then each tired. You, you can eat hamburgers all the time, you can eat burgers all the time, you can eat tacos all the time, sandwich all the time. You know, I give, I give water to water, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
And, and. The more, the more, uh, business, you're at Norwood, I think it's better for Norwood. And, and if we were doing, it's, thank you already, good for us, and it's why we're there. So I know the city, they have to begin their, exactly, the, the way it is, not the way we want it, the way it is.
Right.
Everybody agreed that we were people to Norwood, everybody, we, taxes to Norwood, blah, blah, blah. I pay taxes to Norwood, I got a contract, I got insurance to my truck. The D P don't let me operate without insurance. So I have insurance, I taxes, uh, blah, 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 and. Like I said, I don't say negative reasons, and I was a. Kitchen manager for fifteen years in a place in Kentucky, and I was in Cincinnati, long time ago, in charge in a different places. I mean, I really. The only, some places talking about, I don't know exactly about the problem, like, I mean. People go, go eat whatever they want, and they work well, if you. Norwood don't want that, I mean, I'm right there by, I'm in Norwood, I'll be in High Park, like, I'm in the corner, right there.
Yeah, you're right there.
I mean, they really, uh, like. I don't know how many people this break cost, they gave me this, but they, they won't, okay, I'll be fine.
Yeah.
But it, it is kind of funny, they, you know. One, uh, okay, I mean, perfect, and they don't have a lot of stuff, and they go break. If we go to Oakley, like, say, yeah, we have to get permission, blah, 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 in this, uh, we wanna say that here. But it's a, it's a money that we go decide to, we go to an event, we go to this, we go to. Downtown or whatever, they charge you fee, we decided to pay a lot of money. If we're gonna make money, we make money, if we lose money, we lose money. We're the same way as everybody else. Sometimes we lose money, sometimes we lose products, sometimes, sometimes we make a lot of money, yes. It's why we do it. I mean, but we also the rest to lose and win, lose and win, it's like. Any of this, and then the same way.
If I'm not opposed to say, okay. Yeah, but if we wanna make even play the film. Right, uh, just putting something on the table, that the city would, if the city says, okay, these are the trucks that aren't here, and this is what you would have to pay. A year, right, to operate within the city in Norwood, and then they, you know, they, you cap it off, like, you can only have so many suspension. In Norwood, you only have so many, you only have so much, so many things in Norwood. You have to say, I don't know if that's some, I don't know how legal that would, I don't know how legal that would be.
I can kind of speak to that. I've met with a few other city administrators, and there are some cities like North College Hill that do the annual truck registration. So you could pay one fee a year, you are licensed to operate within North College Hill. And North College Hill is much smaller than us, so that might be all different enforcement wise, um. But as an alternative to adding a day permit in North College Hill, you can just file your annual. License with them, and then you can operate in North College Hill. Something else that they did that I think was really cool, um. Is they had like a monthly food truck day, where any food truck, whether you were registered with the North College Hill or not, can come and set up that day. There were no fees for that day, and it was just a way to like bring new business in, get people to come check out some food trucks and new options. And it was like one day at the end day, we're on a city property, any trucks who wanted to could sign up for a spot and just, um, that guy's. Uh, what I think is really cool, I like the idea of registering annually to say, like, we are gonna, we are. Have intentions of operating consistently within Norwood for the next year. Here's our fee, we don't need to worry about day permits, stop operating, and that also benefits places like the secondary that do a truck every Friday. The owners of that truck that's there every Friday, it's spoken to me, and they are concerned that they aren't gonna be able to show up every weekend, operate anywhere. Uh, that that's a consistent business statement, so they rely on that for income. So, and so I, I wanna make sure that there is like a safety, a catch for people who. Operate here consistently, who need this for income, use this to support their families, um, this is for career, and shouldn't count team filing a daily. For, for April.
No other business has to file.
Yeah, no.
It's a lot of family, but depends on the food truck, but I know. He, he, he's getting his food truck for a little longer than I am. And he always there, so I know the income, I don't know if he got something else, as I know, no. I don't know about them, but when you spend all day there, that is our income, and the income from my hours, as I know, but.
I mean, you all are, okay, you're important businesses, as you're in, this is. To bring such great stuff to the city, and just making sure that we can. Make sure everyone, every type, type of restaurant.
And, and, like you say, if it's any reference that we got it, fits, that we, you guys wanted fits and everything, like, you're talking about generators, stuff like that. I mean. Some people have what they have and everything. I got lucky, I find the quiet generator for, uh, seven hundred bucks, but they, they don't have very often, it's like four hundred thousand. Like four thousand dollar generator, and it's super quiet, and some people can afford it, some people not. And like I said, I would like if I went for seven hundred dollars, so it was a good deal, yeah. I, I know, and then like you guys said that, and.
Yeah, so I think.
Try to everything, we came to support families, to make money, to, and to be livable, so you know what I'm saying? To follow the rules, and if it is twenty food trucks in Norwood. I come in, ask to the health department if it was okay, but there, it was okay, I, I mean, I come in and then they're come. So why they give us license, why they, they, like, they, like. They should have, you know, I want twenty cats, you know, only twenty, twenty one is not allowed, I mean, you gotta, you gotta, oh, one in five food trucks. Five is five. But competition sometimes is good, the removal is for very. And, and, I mean, the, it, it, it's not, it's, it's, I'm, it's, I'm tacos, it's tacos, and that, a lot of that, but. Competition, I think it's great for everybody, and more options to eat is also much better.
Really like how you investigate, because I like those, I like those ideas, you know, thank everybody that's, the city benefits, I think food, I think. It closes the door, a lot of misunderstanding there. Uh, yeah, I, 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 I don't like that, I don't like the racism, I don't like to do all this stuff up, up in here, but simply when you make a fair net, when it closes the door, a, a, a lot of that stuff. As it stands right now, it is a fan. It looks, it looks, it looks, it looks bad because you got everybody talking about it, you have the media covering it. Makes it look like this, the city officials, or small businesses, and that's not true. Um, you guys have been more than gracious and more than open and transparent about. This, and I, I, I think that we could find some solutions, like, I know there was a solution about a food truck. I know there's space right there on Watson, Watson, Watson Way, right? Where I think that we can find, if we, I, I don't, I would invest. Um, that we can find investors to develop that area, maybe we can put containers and food trucks, stations and stuff along, along that particular area. Maybe we can start a registry where the, the food trucks pay the city, um, a yearly fee and say, hey, this, if we're gonna be from January first to December thirty first. We're gonna operate here, and here is, I don't know, oh, here's a thousand dollars, you know, to operate within that, within that year. Um, I think all of us as food trucks that's here already, is willing to, to, to do that, right, so that we can work. With, you know, the city officials as opposed to, you know, everybody's going back and forth, everybody's digging back and forth. Um, unless the city just doesn't have the food trucks in here, then that's, that's a whole different argument, that's a very different thing, but I don't think that's what you guys. Don't want. I'm, you've laid it a bungly here, this is not something that you want. But I think if we could sit down and we could come up, and I know for absolute fact that. Um, the chief of the fire department in, for Hamilton County, which is state, but I spoke to him. I know that the head of the food truck organizations, um, in Cincinnati, Dayton, Kentucky, and all of them are one of the country's table help, propose those things. I know there's, I, I have a lot of people that are on standby, but I wanted to come in and sit down and talk with you guys about coming with proposals of how we can. How we can, um, 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 put solutions to the table that will work and be fair and equitable for everybody. Um, nobody's here to take business from anybody, especially from the brick and mortars. Um. But, you know, I gotta say, I mean, I can't, it's not my fault if somebody wants to go get a cheesecake or it's going to McDonald's, I can't.
Right.
I can't really stop it. They'll do that whether I'm in Norwood or whether I'm in, um, 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 Silverton, that's just something that people, people would do. But I think competition is good for the marketplace. Everybody's not gonna eat cheesesteaks every day. Everybody's like, we eat tacos, everybody's like, we'll eat burgers every single day, but I think the diversity. That this brings, I think it could help Norwood, so I'm all for, A, having a registry. For food trucks to pay a fee to the city, oh, here, B, having the fire department come in, inspect from Norwood, come in, and, and we pay. Instead of paying Hamilton County, we pay that hundred and fifty dollars to. You guys.
Yeah.
You know, to come in and do, um, the inspections. Um, I'm all for having, um, a little, along with the building department and, and the health department saying, hey, this. This is what needs to be done for this particular, um, situation, whether it's just a, kind of a single, we just wanna kick them out. Because it's bad, you know, I don't think so at both of them.
And just to give us a clarity on like where this is coming from and all this, I mean, I can't, I've been getting some emails where I think there's something huge yet about. Some things, um. City council did not see this ordinance until the Friday before everyone else there has. We were not a part of the conversation with the planning commission, we don't have like some behind the scenes communication going on with the planning commission. So I have the same inspiration from watching the planning commission leaving that everyone in the public got. Um, we aren't sent like many reports on the planning commission until everyone else sees them. Um, so we kind of came into this with the same amount of information that everybody else had, what it did, city else. Uh, so there was nobody on the city council who said, we need to address food trucks, this needs to come down the pipeline, um. We are unfortunately burdened with. Handling that after it does get sent down to us. Um, so it is, it is on us to find like an ultimate solution, but we are not the people who initiated this conversation. That there was some concern that needed, needed address. Um. I say unfortunately, it's very fortunate that we're glad, that we can have these conversations. What I, what I kind of have been getting from what everybody is saying, I think we're all really generally on the same page about this. I think in terms of finding some like tangible solutions and some outcomes that like will work for everybody and will work for the city. If there's a couple of, we need to probably pull into the conversation, I would like to have somebody from the board of healthcare. To address any, any issues that exist that we are not aware of. I've spoken to the board of health, I don't know whether, you know, I, I love. So I, what I would like to do is get a meeting scheduled with the board of health. Um, I would also like to invite, um, who's the president of the SCM area?
Anya, yeah.
I would really like to invite her, um, because I'm sure she's dealt with this in cities before.
Yes.
Uh.
And I'll, I'll say, I'll call her tonight.
That would be awesome.
The next meeting, next change, whatever. Not just that, but, but some of the other, um. Some of the other presidents, some of these other cities, then, I do know that had, had the same issue. And, and, and they committed, and they made it work, um.
Yeah, yeah.
I don't think it's helpful, bring any ideas that, that are tangible ideas that, that, that are, you know, solvable.
Yeah, for me, this is like. We are not, in Ireland, there are many other communities that have had similar issues or have other things come up. We can see what they did and just copy it. You don't have to make a new building from scratch. We are in a great position in that there's so many communities around that have stuff that works really well. So I think that there's a easy way to find something that works for everyone, that isn't so extreme in my community as the city stands, uh. Does not. Hurts any business on.
I think a few years ago, you and I were on the committee, where we talked about having a food truck going.
Yes.
All Lafayette, actually it was on Lafayette, where, because I live right on, on Flora. And we talked about, remember, we we had plans to build an actual food truck park on that particular. Um that particular way, but the issue is that we don't know what property the city owns. And so if the city doesn't own any property, then it's, it's kinda makes it difficult. To put food trucks on property where you can build, um receptive, I mean electrical. And you know, it it makes it that much difficult, so does the city own any property? That we can say, okay, listen, we can put these food trucks on here, we can put, you know, we can put five or six food trucks on here. And five or six food trucks pay the rent to the city, along with the taxes and all of the fire inspections and and everything, right? Is there a place in the city somewhere that um the city owns or the city knows a developer that's willing? To say, hey, if you build this up, the city can make, the city can make a lot, they can make probably about an extra hundred thousand a year.
I know that's the thing that uh Candace has been into in the past, so she probably has more information than us. Cause she's been very interested in getting that going somewhere, you know, down down the line. But yeah, I think that'd be a great addition to the city in the future.
So I live the mind, and and I do not speak in front of us. I would be happy to vote this go and just get rid of it and be done with. I wanna use this opportunity that we have to admit this to provide protections. And Julie, I think you are applicable in this situation because in this organs, we could. Determine the fee for Trans Am or Mobile, because that's what this is about, it's about mobile food uh stuff. And so one of my questions for you all who are in business, what protections are we right? That will keep you operating safely and and faster as possible?
I I would just say the registry, right? I would say, I I I would say the registry, the registry is the biggest, is the biggest one, right? Cause as it stands right now, either six, maybe seven food trucks that scatter throughout Norwood right now. Um I would just say, you know, that protection for registering a cap. Yeah, as much as I hate to say it, you would have to put a cap on the number of uh of trucks that could, that could come in there, but. When you do an special, when you do an event, let's just say, that's something, that's a whole different thing. But but having an actual registry where those food trucks say, we come in, let's just say, we pay six hundred dollars a year, right? To the the city, right? This isn't about making money for the city. No, 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 we, we, what it says that, and what it does, it says, these trucks are allowed to operate in these, in these parameters of the city. Okay, but then we can take a step further, right? These are stipulations, A, you're clean, and this, you know, A, B, C, D, E, F, G, it has to be. This has to be the stipulation, right? Um one of the things that we did down at the BP, when they bought from my group, we had bigger ticket out there. And we started seeing that it started getting attractive homelessness and yada yada, we we got rid of it. Because it just, it was a bad looking thing, everything dirty. So I say, that registry is one protection that you can put up in there. And everybody that's already has a truck in Norwood, my actually grandfather then, right? Then say, okay, these are trucks that that were here, that have been here for three, four, five years, whatever, these trucks are in here, and we put a cap. On it, and you can actually designate food trucks on us, right? Where you can say, this truck won't can operate here in this zone, this truck can operate here in this zone. They're not allowed to operate in certain, in in this particular zone, that gives it that protection. Um the trust that protection, so now these get, none of us ever worry about, well, they're gonna kick us out, no. We register, pay our fees, we're allowed to operate here every single, every single year. I can only speak for Jesus, I can't speak for everybody else, I only presume to speak for everybody else. But um that's one proposal that I think, and 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 like I said, I think our president of our association and some of the people. Come in and ushering some more ideas that we think that will be live or protect by food trucks.
And I think that does put it more in line with the brick and mortars, um if you guys are, if the people that are coming into or doing business. Are open to being inspected, to be, you know, inspected by the fire department and the health department and that they register and that we know that they're there and that they're operating. I think that puts it more in line with the standards I'm held to, which is, is, I I think a good thing, so. And I think that's in line with the standards other communities have done as well, sorry.
So I can question, um, my food trucks expected by the city of Hamilton. Food trailers have one price, restaurants, um or fees are a lot more, it really just depends on what that establishment. Again, food trucks are a lot cheaper, but again, you have the right to choose, I mean, everything's.
And I'm not saying it's a huge charge. We wouldn't wanna make it the same amount, like, but just having some, some fee structure, but it's a standard thing, the right thing to do. Not, not like the same as a big restaurant, but small food truck. But at least that, that is, that is not what I would ever intend.
Yeah, the problem is like McDonald's always busy. Always busy, they pay the same fees. Where not as much, they do half of the volume themselves, and they have to pay the same amount. If they have the same capacity for, that's most. People, again, they should go to McDonald's, they go to McDonald's.
Yeah, and so there is kind of a precedent for doing something with zones, uh that's sort of how downtown Cincinnati operates, they're like designated vendor zones. Uh where people are allowed to work and uh that's not, it would not be rocket science for us to develop something like that. Susan said he also does like the distance of feet that food trucks have to be away from a working order restaurant that sells food. Um it's not very far, right? Uh but that might be something worth considering, if the concern is that there's too much competition for grandparents. If we talk to his others, that's for sure, I don't think that's a reason to have a place, you know, a designated foot distance. Um but I'm not interested in like capping.
When I talk about fees and brick and mortar, right? And I'm gonna put the obvious on the table, right? I I I know there's a lot of owners in McDonald's, they did over five million dollars last year, right? That Chipotle gets four point three million last year, right? Some of these other brick and mortars are doing millions and millions of dollars, and none of us in here are 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 doing it, right? We're we're modest, maybe at the most, maybe five hundred thousand a year, if if then. Um and so when you talk about fees and you talk about stocks, I I I, they're outdoing us by a lot, we're not selling that, we're not taking that risk. I can guarantee you that I'm not doing five million dollars, if I was doing five million dollars a year, I wouldn't be selling this food truck, I guarantee that.
And to clarify, the brick and mortars that I'm concerned about are not the McDonald's and the Chipotle's of my city, they are the small businesses of North City. Um and I'm not prioritizing one type of business over another type of business, I just wanna ensure that it's fair play. And if I were a restaurant and a restaurant open next door, I would be pissed, cause that's my restaurant. But I think that's also like fair play, there's nothing stopping a restaurant from opening next door. Um and I'm not saying we need to one hundred percent include that, but if that's a decent feedback that we are getting from the community. That is how this city operates, so it's not that out of the.
Some type of food truck, we could, they they could be sitting there in a restaurant, can go in. Have a restaurant inside T P L's stadium, right? And have a restaurant inside there, um I happen to know that T P L's building something on the outside of there, where there is a food trucks that are around. That's like kills, that's those, those food trucks. Um so they they could work the opposite way. Um as well, where, you know, these trucks that have been there for years and and brick and mortars move in and they 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 kill. They kill the benefit of a food truck, they often make those where it's like, kids are all spending hundreds of thousands of dollars. But I understand when you talk about you wanna protect the small um businesses of 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 Norwood, um.
But you guys are small businesses of Norwood too.
It just feels like it's a distinction between the food and the small business.
Cause there's nothing stopping Burger King from buying a lot of cross street from you. And putting Burger King up.
Or yeah, or the corners, a corner C V S, it's putting any kind of anything there, that's, that would be.
I don't think the city could stop that.
Absolutely not. No, it's just, it's a, it's the way to use, everything, but it's the extent of it. It is part of the, yeah, zoning or planning or whatever, yes, it would be, yeah, they could easily do that.
So we're not putting any legislation on brick and mortars from competing with brick and mortars. And so, and I think, you know, the taco trucks, I think they made Chipotle better. They, they made them to beat, you know, it's.
I'm sorry, uh so I know I haven't introduced myself, my name is Roberto. Uh he's my uncle, I help him out with the taco truck and whatnot. Um so I, I'm new to this conversation and whatnot, and I'm here because I think some of my folks here can't speak uh English that well. So um I just wanted to speak uh on behalf of them and and also uh for the people that aren't here. There's guys, people missing here, but um so I know there's uh, you know, sunshine for everybody to get. But I'm trying to say everybody can make money, and everybody creates your own opportunities. Uh obviously, uh everybody, like you said, uh there's try uh Chipotle and whatnot, everybody has their own team. Um for example, uh I know some people that might drag forty minutes to uh eat his taco or whatnot, or our taco. Uh you can look on our um our Google review page, there's people that come from California, Chicago, just to come here. Here in Norfolk. Honestly, uh I mean, if you ask people maybe ten, twenty years ago, if they know about this area, I'm pretty sure they would have known about it. So like me working with my uncle, I've met people from different places, just, you know, they come here and. And spend their money, and like, who knows, you guys were saying earlier, uh there's people um that are getting to know the area. So obviously, uh that spreads the word for all of us. And like I said, uh we're open to uh finding a solution, you know, uh and obviously, uh. It just creates those opportunities, like I said, I think everybody has their own talent and their seasoning. And whatnot, and we're not here to see business from this cheap or from here or over there. We obviously trying to uh bring unity, but also uh bring the unity. Sets, uh and we're open to uh, you know, uh finding a solution. I know you guys can't really say what, what uh, what the problem is and whatnot, you know, but um. But you know, we're, we're open to working, but and obviously, uh my uncle and. And also I didn't help, it's terrible, that helped out. Um we depend on this because of this, this is our own game, often without. Obviously, like you said, we wanna maybe, you know, build a brick and mortar maybe in the future and whatnot, but we just don't have that money right now. Of course, that's, so, uh you know, and this was like, the reason we started the taco truck here was because uh. Obviously during COVID, uh say we're out of work, you know, government wasn't paying our bills and whatnot. So we obviously asked to, I get an, an opening up a business, we actually wanted a a brick and mortar. Uh business for COVID and whatnot, but it's that they haven't had money, so just, you know. Uh saw the opportunity, you know, the taco trucks and whatnot, and fortunately, you know, uh it's been going well for us. Uh like I said, a lot of people, like all over like the country, come here, like I said. You can check on our Google review page, even on Reddit, we're competing with like taco trucks that are from Hamilton. Kentucky and whatnot, and it just, uh it is not even about, you know, who has the best flavor and whatnot, but. It's mostly about uh bringing people here in Norwood.
Yeah, so what I'm thinking is we schedule a meeting for July, um give everybody enough time to, you know, the schedules, we should, it's available. Invite uh even from the C I T A and the other folks from the food truck organizations that have some sort of experience with this. The board of health and the building department of the city, I'd like to invite Candace to finish, she was talking about this last term.
I take a lot of your time, but I would be there.
So that we can kind of work on like starting some actual. Writing down guidelines, rules and all of that, like here's, here's some ideas, you can look at that, like here's a. Start to like put some legal.
I'm sorry, please, whenever the meeting come out, like this is a July. If you send like invitation or something, because they, they. No, they don't, here or not, I don't know.
You'll send it to me and I'll send it to you.
But nobody let me know until like, Tuesday, until like Tuesday.
Before you leave, I'll have anybody who wants to be included, uh you can write down your name or.
Yeah, and that's, that'd be great because uh obviously, nobody communicated with us. If it wasn't for somebody that told me that, I was not gonna be here, you know what I'm saying? And why? Now because I don't want to, because I don't know, there there ain't this going on. And the, and I thought this started like a couple of years' time, yes, I heard that, but. Nobody come in and actually tell me something, the health department, they'll be from, they have, but. They all, the health department, they were, they were here in Norwood, right? And they expect me, they say you gotta move every forty five days, I was from Monday, like you have to move. And we still need to drop this move, like, gotta move it, and then you can bring it back, but you'll have to do this movement, so you know, there's movement, like you have to let go.
It's unfair to lose a business, day of business every forty five days, that's unfair too. But I would say that's not from the city of Norwood, we have to enforce that because it's a. Cause it's a state law, yeah.
So that's a, that's a, that's a legal O R C, that's not just in Norwood, that's, that's, that's everywhere, so Cleveland, they feel like to do it everywhere. It's, it's not just in Norwood, but what we do is, what we do is that every time we move our truck. And we call the city and we say, hey, this, can you, there's a, um, I don't know if they keep notes or whatever, but we say, hey, we're moving our truck. For the day, yeah, we're moving our, we're, we're moving our truck, right? We call every time we move it, because it has to be moved every, every forty days, and I can't, that's what the local licenses are just saying, so that you don't abuse that. So, but I'm also into having Dave mean, um from the chief of the fire department. Come in, participate in um the next year, even the lottery from the mayor's office will contact, you know. I mean, which is, which isn't, so there's a lot of people that's invested in this particular process that a lot of people don't know about. But but um, you know, if we can come up with some fire solutions, you know, some codes that we can issue to some of the trucks that. We can get you guys involved and make it easier for you guys, that's, that's totally okay, I know for me, um it is. But I think um having a registry, having communication between, this is probably one of the better reasons that I've, that I've seen in. Three, four years this time, on the table with the food trucks.
And then like my nephew says, we open the finance solution, we open to do, I mean. So far, we, I think in the way I see it, we don't have any problem, you know, right? And if if it's something that we need to fix, some, something that I think is. Is wrong, and something is wrong and I think is not wrong, I fix it, it's not a big deal, whatever it is, we go fix it, we're trying to bank it there and. And you know, and I don't think it, I think food trucks stay in Norwood for the community in Norwood for. People that come from other states and that, and we should be here.
Yes, your counsel, is there some type of, is there some type of, I don't know, I don't wanna say taxes, you know, what, it's incentives? That we can, that that the city can, let's just say, offer other businesses, like, for instance, I would mind going over to. Serious, right? I know that there's space available, but the problem is that the rents, over, it's bricks and mortar, that that rent is, you know, four or five thousand a month. It's very expensive to go over there, um is there something that the city can do to, to work with businesses to help? All businesses in Norwood, help the transition, like I know in Middletown, they have a program where they help. People get into some of these buildings and some of these things, the problem is, some of these restaurants hasn't last, off market, they last, it's a different story. Um some of the restaurants didn't last, Chicken Street Fry, those are very good restaurants, they started out as Z Suits, remember? Um I don't know, I don't know, Z Suits were there, um then they went from Z Suits to Dickies. Um then COVID happened, they were from Dickies to Street Fry, and and Patrick, I know he didn't, they didn't last over there. And so I think one of the reasons that I know that they didn't last was because the rents. Some of these rents and some of these buildings are astronomical um high, so I'm wondering the city. Is there a program that the city has to work with some of these businesses, like Factory Fifty, to help smaller businesses get in?
So we, we countered with Ally, with Alway, uh with Captain Fitzgerald over there, and Alway helps us, uh. So we, we countered with Ally, with Alaway, um, we kept the Fitzgerald over there and Alaway helps us, uh, and Mike, like we want to get word against it, but there is not a designated like restaurant. Path, but we do work, um, with Alaway to help, yeah, businesses establish it. So that is a program that does exist.
There's some stuff in Hamilton County that can help the rates and different things.
So personal, personal region have this program for small businesses. The thing is, I don't want them to be there. Because it's a, two food trucks already there and it's a problem. And we started in Norwood, like almost four years ago, and we want to stay in Norwood. Yeah, we're, we're, we're going for that here and everything, and like I said.
Re, reestablish your base. It's hard. Yeah, I know that the city has, sorry, tried to, I don't know where we are in the process. We, we looked at trying to get some money to help, like essentially wipe out, uh, some of these buildings. I don't think we're successful in getting that grant or that, either state or federal money. Sorry, there's a lot of different sources of money. The city has tried to get some of that stuff, but yes, but Alaway is probably the main one that is currently available, but will continue. I, I know that Candace has looked into this and I have too, just like trying to find some way to get money to buy box stuff to try to make it attractive for businesses, not just restaurants, but any business. So yeah, that's definitely something on my mind, um, and other folks.
I think the trucks, they have to be community. I mean, I know, um, I talked to, um, the vendors and they were, you know, interested in the food truck thing and, and what's beside, well, that just, so, I mean, so I mean, but I think the food trucks provide, you know, I know for a fact that the BP too, too. I know that the BP, I spoke to the BP director, and that's typically being Jason says, going on pay conditions, that's we've been down there because people that come here, they go buy cigarettes, they go buy gas, you know, Kroger's, they go, you know, they go to some of these locations and, and, and spend money. And I, I think I like the fact that it dispels, um, the fact that, you know, you, you have a lot of minority businesses over there. And a lot of people are coming, this fails some of the old myths about, well, there's old sundowns. The stereotypes. It, it really dispels that by having taco trucks, barbecue trucks, cheese stick trucks. It gives, it, it, it diversifies the city by bringing other people who would normally come to Norwood inside of the city. Um, and, and, and it just helps with overall status of every, and how everything looks. Nobody here is blaming council for it. And it is, trust me, nobody there blaming council or my or, or any, or, or the, um, fire department, trust me. But what we do want is likely send us a solution, like five for everybody and worship everybody.
That's why I'm saying it, it, not glad, glad is the wrong word, but I, it is good that we have this opportunity to take it to committee and actually pass it out and try to make it so it works for everyone. Hey, good feedback. But my worry is if we had just voted it down, maybe it would just come back, you know? And there'd be an air of uncertainty for maybe several months.
So can you guys explain, and we'll translate for. We'll translate for them. Can you explain to them exactly what the next steps is now? So that when they leave, when everybody leaves here, they understand what exactly is the next steps.
So we will set a meeting for July. I'm thinking probably late July, just to give everyone as much time, um, so we can ensure that CFDA can be involved in the building department and the, um, uh, Board of Health can be involved. We'll set a meeting for late July. Uh, if you put your information down, we will let you know when the meeting is going to be, so you can also attend. Um, and we will work on getting some like tangible outcomes from that, so, uh, we're not editing the ordinance to, to reflect what, what we actually want to see happening, uh, starting with that meeting.
And, and until that happens, nothing, nothing will change. Everything is exactly the same.
This will not come back to council until we send it back to council, so there will not be a second reading. There will not be a first. Um, it will not go anywhere except this committee until we send it out.
Can we bring more letters? And, you know, leaving a very letter where people, when it's a little longer, like, you know, it's very, hey, everyone is gathered and be here and be great for us and, and we'll be friends.
I didn't bring my card.
I didn't either, okay. I had it in my bag.
Would it be okay if some apart or, or? Be okay if we went on there and say, hey, we need your support since you're normal. No, I'm just saying, would it be okay? Cause I, I've posted stuff before about my food truck being vandalized. They kind of love that and they came out there and put it out there.
Uh, so I know the moderators would ultimately decide if they wanted to put that up, but from our perspective, it is up to you where you want to post it.
The more support we can get, the better. So I mean, if you use the dot. Yeah, I think it'd be much, much better and if they also look at us, they, they, they should look at us.
Yeah, whatever you feel would be the best avenue of how you want to do stuff.
The city doesn't run the road strong.
We have no affiliation. Yeah, that's, um, the moderators would decide if they wanted to. They do tend to try to keep stuff that is more political, a little bit. I don't have any sway with them.
That is all on them.
We are not allowed, like, from a. We can't post anything about like city business. They just declined it. Um, but yeah, if you wanted to go for it, I can't promise the whole world.
But just so you guys know, they're done. These guys are not saying we want everybody out.
Oh, yes, but we, we really appreciate you coming in. Hear me speak that every sort of support that you get is valuable. So even though you're already convinced, maybe if there's a administrator or just people are like, hey, what kind of support is there?
Shows that, yeah.
Can I ask a couple of questions real quick, just because I've not been to a couple of your places, various sports, uh, Norwood, Grand Junction. And all for resources, uh, that's eventually been sold.
So, yeah, yeah, that's the same. And you're a, and you're the other BP. So that's everything. I am, thank you guys. Um, Mike, thank you for quite a fine.
I appreciate it.